All right, welcome everyone. Running a couple of minutes behind, but I do have 5:32. We will start the meeting. We will open for public comment. Public comment will be from 5:33 to 6:03 if we need the extra time. If not, we'll start at 6 o'clock. But if anybody would like to come speak, you'll have three minutes to come to the podium and address the commissioners.
Hi, y'all. My name is Hillary. I wrote it out because I'm not super great at public speaking. But I just want to preface this by saying that I am bringing this forward because I do think it could affect our budget in 2025 and 2026. Recently, it's been revealed that Sparta Police Department has entered a partnership with ICE. And I want to say, I do understand the distinction that the current agreement is with Sparta Police Department, which is funded through the city budget, not the counties. But even so, this should matter to you guys as well, because the same people who pay county taxes pay city taxes. You guys represent some people who live in the city. And at the end of the day, whether the cost is going to fall on the city or the county, it's still families in White County, the people who are sitting in this room that are going to foot the bill. Sparta Police Department's agreement is to become what ICE calls a force multiplier. Under ICE 287G Task Force Model, local law enforcement officers are trained and deputized to carry out immigration enforcement tasks during their routine police duties, such as questioning people about their immigration status and issuing detentions, effectively acting as an extension of federal ICE agents in our community. While ICE presents this as enhancing public safety, it fundamentally turns local police into agents of federal immigration enforcement, raising serious concerns about civil rights and liability and community trust. We're seeing this, ICE doesn't cover these bills for lawsuits that are filed for the wrongful arrest. When lawsuits are filed for wrongful detention, it's not ICE paying the damages, it will be the taxpayers of Sparta in White County. We're seeing this happen across the country. And in 2025, along with, we've seen this a lot. In March, 22 people, including a U.S. citizen, filed a lawsuit over unlawful ICE arrest. In July, 12 people sued after being arrested without warrants in immigration courthouses. That same month, a class action lawsuit was filed in Southern California after ICE raids, where U.S. citizens even were swept up. Also in July, the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Funds filed a lawsuit seeking $1 million in damages on behalf of a U.S. citizen who was unlawfully detained outside of a Home Depot. As history shows us, and history shows us just how expensive these cases can be, Los Angeles County paid $14 million to settle just one lawsuit. New York City is currently facing up to $92 million in claims related to unlawful ICE detentions. And smaller counties have been forced to pay, like Lee County, Pennsylvania, which paid $95,000 plus legal fees to one single wrongful detention. Closer home, Knox County shows us how quickly these partnerships during resources. How they and ICE detainee there cost $140 per day, but ICE only reimburses $114 per day. That was a loss of $26 per day for every detainee every day. As of this summer, Knox County has spent nearly $130,000 of taxpayer monies to cover this gap before even facing a single lawsuit. The message is clear that partners with ICE opens doors to costs our communities cannot afford. If just one wrongful detention happens here, taxpayers in Sparta will be the one paying for it. Multiple lawsuits could easily run into the millions, and that money should be used to our schools, our roads, and our underfunded resources that we need here in White County. I urge you to take this risk very seriously before White County allows any deeper involvement with ICE. We need transparency, we need safeguards, and we need to have an honest conversation about what this partner looks like to the people you guys serve. This isn't about politics, I promise. It's about protecting the taxpayers of Sparta in White County. And tonight, I want to leave you guys with some clear action steps. First, I ask you to urge the sheriff of White County, I didn't know you'd be here, hey, Steve, I figured you'd be here, but I urge you not to get involved with ICE enforcement so we don't multiply the financial risk for our community. Secondly, I ask that you guys encourage the leadership of Sparta to reconsider the existing ICE partnership, given the cost and the legal liabilities it poses. And finally, if this partnership continues, I urge that you guys insist on strong safeguards, requiring judicial warrants, clear policies, and officer training, so that when the inevitable happens and someone is illegally detained or civil rights violation occurs, we are not dragged into lawsuits that will drain our money that we're paying in taxes. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, guys.
I'll back up and clarify. I was not clear when I asked for people to come speak. If anybody wants to come speak from 5:30 to 6:00 specifically about the budget, I will allow other audience members to speak at the end of the meeting about other items that are not related to the budget. So I have 5:38 if we need to go to 6:08. If we have additional people that would like to speak, I'll extend to 6:08 for public comment specifically to the budget. Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Best Southern Baptist preachers I ever saw always pulled their wristwatches off, put it in front of them so they could easily track the time. I'll do the same. So I see a number of gentlemen and ladies in this room.
What is your name, sir?
My name is Steve Phillips.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm a resident of White County, and sometimes I'm a resident of Tennessee Heart. So I see a number of people in this room who might also be residents of Tennessee Heart at some point in time in their lives, just like me. As I lay, as I have had the experience of laying at the end of my driveway, gassing for breath, and waiting for the ambulance to arrive, I hope that other people realize that the folks that we want waiting on us at the end of our driveway, gassing for breath, should be highly motivated, should be well-paid, should be energetic, and coming to our defense, who should be experienced enough to bring their experience to me lying at the end of my driveway, whether they're waiting for that experience to take a hike to Putnam County or to Cumberland County, but to some other county that might pay them for their experience and their benefits. So that's about all I want to say is I hope you all remember that the folks that we reward and the folks that will someday pay us back.
Thank you.
How are y'all?
Good.
Jeffrey Colster, who lived down in the Doyle area. And I'm fairly new to White County, about five, six years now. I wanted to come, I wasn't planning on coming, been watching a little bit of it online. But on my way back from early supper today, I was like, you know, I feel like I need to come. Figure y'all come specifically here. You know, I have a son that's in Sheriff's Department here, our fiance is in the Sheriff's Department here, I have a boy that's a firefighter, friends that work on the ambulance. I've spent a bulk of my time in the Rink Corps, I've spent a bulk of my time in the Rink Corps, so we're very community-aware, right? But after the last meeting that I watched online, I was a little disheartened. And again, I have the utmost respect, I can talk loud, I have the utmost respect for y'all sitting up there, right here. You have a position that you have to make the best decisions possible for people, right? Sometimes leadership isn't really all that popular. And so really hard decisions need to be made as a leader. I've led a whole bunch of people in combat in the Rink Corps three times, right? Sometimes you have to make really, really hard decisions. And it's not about what's right for 10% of the people, it's not what's right for 20% of the people. It's what's right for the bulk of your people, what's right for the residents of White County. I don't want to pay more taxes. I pay a lot of taxes. I swear to juniors, people have been out there a dozen times, I swear at my place, just going up and up and up. But it is what it is, right? What I do know is that little 2%, 3% increase, somebody going to firebomb my car on the way out for being on this side, I'd rather pay that 2% or 3% than to have to wonder, is somebody going to come get me when my tractor rolls over? I do a lot of farming in White County and Van Buren County. Is somebody going to come when somebody breaks into my house and I'm not home? That's my wife and my grandbaby, or my children, right? Is somebody going to come if my house is burned down? Are they trained? Do they have the equipment? None of them folks are looking to get rich, I promise you. I talked to them all. They're not looking to be rich, they're just looking to live, they're looking to be able to attract good people to stay here to take care of us. I promise you, that extra 3, 4, 5, $600 a year, go to Starbucks one last time, okay? You'd rather have somebody there. As prices continue to go up, and if I get to three minutes, just throw something at me. As prices continue to go up, what happens then, and I hate to say it, is kind of the thieving starts, because some people can't afford to buy stuff. So the thieving starts. We need police officers, right? We need the firefighters, we need the ambulance folks. Everybody needs to be paid fairly. They don't need to be rich. But as I said, I understand that it's not a popular thing, but sometimes, you know, leadership doesn't come with popularity all the time. Look yourself in the mirror, make the decision that is absolute best for the bulk of the residents of White County. At least you can look the folks that voted for you in the eye and be like, we made a decision. Right, wrong, indifferent, we made a decision. The one that I think you're going to have a real hard time defending is when we're asking you, why did the state have to come and make the decision? Then why do we need you? The state has to come make this decision. I'm sorry, I truly believe y'all failed, and some of y'all I know, I consider friends, so I don't, please don't take it personal. The county elected you to make the right decisions for them, make the right decision. Don't let somebody else make the decision for us.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Yeah. Hello, my name is Isabel Sackett. I'm currently a senior at White County High School. I don't know how often it is that you see somebody my age here to speak to you, but I'm very excited to be here. I come in a humble and respectable way, and I just want to speak up for teachers and police officers and EMT and firefighters, just in the sense that those have been the people that have made the most prominent impact in my life. You know, right now, our teachers are functioning on a school budget of the last year that doesn't include their raises or the bonuses from the state, and that's not easy. School is somewhere that you go, and you know, your teachers are pouring into you for hours upon hours every single day. I know that some of the best advice and best values I've learned have been from, you know, teachers in my life. I spend most of my time at school, and I'm grateful for that. I love school. I'm the type of student that I'm a senior, but I'm sad to graduate because I love my teachers, I love the administrators, and you know, I'm very grateful for how much they've poured into me. I think that it's very important to remember that those are the people who are going to be pouring into your children, your grandchildren, and they're the ones who are shaping the future of White County. They're pouring out our EMTs, our police officers, and our firefighters. And you want those people to come back to White County. You don't want them to go to other counties and serve other counties. You know, we want them here, we want quality people serving our community. So I think that it's important to keep that in the forefront of our minds when we make decisions, you know, that are impacting us. And so, you know, I just believe that we want to serve them well and show them that we care and we value them and we see their worth. And yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you.
I'll come on up since you got my attention. Crystal Templeton, Webb's Camper. Can I ask questions about this?
Sure.
Question one, if we pass tonight, does the raises go into retrospect as a July 1?
Yes.
They do, for everyone? Okay, great. And then I have another question, but I can't remember what. I've been here with you guys for the past few weeks. I've watched you go from 180 to 157 down to 141. I believe there's multiple reasons that that happened. I don't think these raises are enough. I would be the first one to say that. However, I do think that you guys came to a really good compromise over the last couple of weeks, and I would encourage you in 141 to go ahead and pass. However, when you do that, I'm still going to call everyone of you, and I'm going to continue to encourage you to do an audit, do an audit, do an audit, find where everything is, pull your resolutions, know the rules. Like I told you last week, if you don't know the rules, you can't play the game. Second question, in the event that you guys do pass the budget tonight and theories are correct, can there be resolutions passed or budget amendments passed to maybe use any extra money that are found for the raises to go back up to where you had them? Is that...
Budget amendments are made quite often throughout the year as things arise and come up.
Is that something that would stay in Budget Committee or is that something that would go to full court?
Oh, all of that would, everything has to be voted on by full court.
Okay.
Yeah, for a raise for that nature, it would.
Okay.
Have to come out of committee to full court.
Gotcha. So anything that the Budget Committee votes on, even if it's a line item that stays within that same, does that still have to come out? I thought that could stay just in the budget.
Well, you were specifically asking about raises to start with.
Yeah, I was, but now it's the second question. Yes, you answered my question.
Some items can stay within budget for...
Just, okay.
I don't know.
If you're moving stuff around in minor categories of the budget, you're not increasing the overall revenue to that department.
Okay.
If you're increased revenue, you have to...
So if you're reallocating something within that department, it doesn't have to go to full court, but if you're increasing revenue or you're moving it from one department to the next, then it has to go to full court?
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And thank you for your hard work. I know y'all were tired, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Allen, South Carolina. Fantris Mill Road here in Sparta. Just had a question that's been burning, I mean, should have asked at the last meeting I was here, but I know Commissioner Hutchins in a previous meeting, I think it was you that mentioned that the committees or the commissions met with the department heads looking for opportunities for reduction. I know that y'all worked really hard and stayed in tune with what you guys have done, and I appreciate that. But I was just curious on those discussions with the department heads, was there any significant result from that? And I don't know that you can give me numbers, but I guess my question is, was that effective or was the leaders, the other leaders that we've elected for county departments, where they would come to the table and offer solutions to help you guys?
Most department heads, we've had such a shortfall the last three years, most department heads were asking for raises and asking for additional things because of, just because of increases and due to COVID, and so really didn't have anybody bring anything to the table for reductions. Most of them were asking for additional funding for different things, just for increases in supplies and so on.
I understand that. My experience in manufacturing, management people is, I mean, you always, you always have a budget that you go to department head and say, we need your help. I mean, and I was just curious on whether that was effective or was it, let answering the question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure about six minutes till 6:00. If anybody else would like to come up and speak specifically about the budget process? If we don't have any other takers, I'll go ahead and start the meeting as scheduled at 6:00. If we need to extend it beyond that, I will. If you have any other takers.
All right, you guys all know me, I'm no tax county, and I'm proud of it. But I'm going to tell you right now, you've got some people in this forum here with commissioners that will not call the public back, will not get up and say anything, and they're going to need our votes sooner or later. Get some balls, stand up. I'm not affiliated with any of these departments. I'm not a school teacher, I don't have children in the school system, I'm not in ambulance service, I'm not in the police department, and I'm not a commissioner's wife. But I'm going to tell you something, when election time comes and y'all need people's vote from this public, y'all are going to have to come up with some answers as to why you won't talk to us.
Would you get some balls if you went for your district?
I'm going to go for something else. I've got some balls, believe it or not. And I'll show you just the reason why I said it. And let me ask you another question. Why does these department heads threaten these commissioners? You should be ashamed of yourself threatening these commissioners to get what you want So I want to say something in response to Connie here. She said she wasn't somebody's wife, she wasn't this, she wasn't that. Connie, what are you going to do one day when you need these people? When you're laying on the ground and you need them?
It'll be there or it won't be there. That's just like, we not pay their salary, yet we get people saying, oh, you called 911, oh, you called this, oh, you called that.
All right.
So you're not supposed to use the service when you need it?
Let's not have a bunch of back and forths.
I'll keep it as short and succinct as possible. T. Gumburger, Findley Road. So it has been said, first of all, I am a paramedic, I work three jobs. If you were to ask many of my compatriots, and most people in EMS fall into one or two categories, we either work two or more jobs, or we work enough hours at one service, and if you look at overtime budgets, you can check this. If we work at one service, we work enough hours to constitute a second full-time job. If we work multiple jobs or hours to constitute that. It was said to us previously that, well, if we want more money, we should just work another job, find another job. That's already the case. We're not, as somebody previously stated, we're not looking to get rich, but in today's economy, we're all feeling it. It becomes a little difficult to pay for a house. Mortgages for houses are astronomical, all these things. Prices have gone up, we all understand how inflation and money works. We're just asking that, oh, and currently, I'm actually not full-time at White County. White County's my part-time gig. I used to be full-time at White County. I'm one of those individuals that went somewhere else because, many different reasons. One of those is because White County doesn't pay as much as other places, and I can promise you this, I can promise you, as one who works for three different services, you get what you pay for. People who work here in any EMS service, right? Like there are some people who hold the bar up, any profession, there are people who hold the bar up, and there are people that seem their hardest to push that bar down. When you call 911, that's not one of the times that you want to have a budget paramedic come and pick you up and take care of you for your heart attack or for the pneumothorax that you have, or the hemothorax that you have, the car wreck, I mean, I can go into. We're well-educated. We have to have education every year to keep up with what we're doing. We're not just people kicking rocks. Like we, we have to be trained, skilled, and qualified for what we do, and you get what you pay for. I've worked with many people that really push the level of excellence in EMS up, and I've worked with many paramedics, many paramedics that you're calling on to take care of your babies, your children, that, I don't know if I trust them with my dog. You get what you pay for. And when you don't pay well, people go other places. Look at me. Don't let the entire paramedics, all the paramedics, which there aren't that many now at White County, go other places. We got a ton of EMTs, and I think we're worried for EMTs, but the disparity between what EMTs can do and what critical care paramedics can do is pretty big. It's pretty big. So do whatever you guys will, just let it be in the back of your head, am I getting a budget paramedic to come take care of me and my family? Or am I getting somebody who actually knows what they're doing? And I would love to work at White County full-time. The director's name?
Anybody else would like to come up and speak specifically about the budget process? Anybody else like to come address the commission specifically about the budget?
All right. I know a lot of you personally. I'm Jay Claw. I'm a parent in Sparta, in Parkville, EMS, obviously. I'm not going to tell you anything that, you know, you guys have heard a hundred times. You know, I mean, it's the same old deal. You guys know what the deal is. You know what the job is. But I can tell you what I'm hearing in the industry. Okay? We are being looked at as a joke of a county. Absolute joke. There's people outside of this county that watch these live streams. Okay? I swore to myself that I would not get up and talk to you again, because last time I got up and talked to you, several were on the phone, couldn't be bothered. Okay? I am sick and tired of watching. I wish you guys could just do something. But I can tell you this. What you have offered for raises is greatly appreciated, absolutely greatly appreciated by everybody. It simply is not enough to maintain good people. It's not enough to attract good people. What are you guys going to do when the doors close? Because we don't have people. Any of y'all going to volunteer for shifts? Because, you know, shift starts at seven, and then it starts again at seven in the morning, and seven again tomorrow night. Okay? Keep this stuff in mind, guys. Okay? It's amazing how we cannot afford, cannot afford to fund something. But yet, we can afford to defend the lawsuits that follow when we don't afford to pay for it to begin with. You understand? Y'all must have a whole lot better insurance man than I do, because, you know, my guy would be jumping up and down. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Last call. All right, come on, Paul. Our meeting to order, we would, come on, sorry.
They went over here.
All right, you're going ahead. All right. Sheriff Page is going to lead us in prayer. Please remove cover and say it.
Precious and kind gentlemen, Father, Lord, thank you for this day. We thank you for the mercy that you show us all the time, Father. We pray for your guidance, and we pray for that guidance to be in your will, your Father. Forgive us where we sin, where we sin so many times. Christ name we pray. Amen.
Please state your names. Who's the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, please.
Kyle Goff.
Here.
Larry Daniels.
Here.
Kane Rogers.
Here.
Chris Brington.
Here.
Lanny Selby.
Here.
Dakota White.
Here.
Robert McCormick.
Here.
Becky Golden.
Here.
Derek Hutchings.
Here.
Jordan Coe.
Here.
Roger Mason.
Here.
Thomas Margeson.
Here.
TK Austin.
Here.
David Cranford.
Here.
I have 13 present, one absent.
All right. We do have a quorum. Number five on the consent counter, approval spread of minutes from the last month's meetings.
Make a motion.
Second.
Of a motion by Mr. Austin and by Ms. Golden. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No surprises. All right. Number six, resolution from the Budget Committee. So the first resolution, 66-08-2025, is the tax levy. So this resolution will be to set the $1.41 tax rate. All right. Roll call vote.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion to approve, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion to second. All right. Now roll call vote.
Chris Brington. Kane Rogers.
Yes.
Derek Hutchings.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Kyle Goff.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Robert McCormick.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Jordan Coe. Thomas Margeson. TK Austin.
Due to the fact that it is nowhere near enough and an injustice to the county to pass this budget merely because we're letting everything fall through the cracks yet again, my vote is no.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
Yes. I would like to vote yes.
Anyone else? I have 10 yes, 3 no, 1 absent.
All right. Motion carries. Now, Resolution 67-08-2025, this is to appropriate the funding to actually fund the County General Fund. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All right. Roll call.
Kyle Goff.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Kane Rogers.
Yes.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
Robert McCormick.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Derek Hutchings.
Yes.
Jordan Coe. Roger Mason.
Yes.
Thomas Margeson. TK Austin.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have 11 yes, 2 no, 1 absent.
Okay. Motion carries. Number C, Resolution 68-08-2025, this is to approve the nonprofit appropriations. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
And a second. All right. Roll call vote.
Dakota White.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Jordan Coe.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Sorry. Kyle Goff.
I'm staying.
Robert McCormick.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Kane Rogers.
Yes.
Thomas Margeson.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
Derek Hutchings.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have 12 yes, 1 absent, 1 pass.
All right. Motion carries. Resolution 69-08-2025, the authorizing opioid abatement statement, settlement, and amended amendment.
Motion.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
What is it?
Well, yeah, that...
Let him get the motion.
Okay.
So a motion, did I get a second? Okay. A motion and a second. So now we've got discussion on the opioid.
Is this the one, Roger, hang on. Is this the one where due to the company shutting down, they have to reallocate the funds? Or is this something different?
When the settlement, this particular resolution has to do with Purdue.
Purdue, okay.
And the Sackler family owns, apparently owns Purdue.
Okay.
Part of it filed bankruptcy, and so having to go back in and readjust it. This resolution also allows there's eight more companies that have or in the process of filing bankruptcy also. This allows us to just agree to the terms of bankruptcy in the events that that comes to me in the future.
Okay. Thank you. I thought it was, but I wanted to just have a check.
Good. All right. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
Kane Rogers.
Yes.
Derek Hutchings.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Kyle Goff.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Robert McCormick.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Jordan Coe.
Yes.
Thomas Margeson.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have 13 yes, 1 absent.
Okay. Motion carries. Number seven on the consent counter, Resolution 70-08-2025, appointing Haley Howard to the Industrial Development Board.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? TK, do you have a second on that? Any discussion on that? All right. Roll call. Do you have those on that?
It's your, you have to...
Roll call, okay.
Kane Rogers.
Yes.
Thomas Margeson.
Yes.
Jordan Coe.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Robert McCormick.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Derek Hutchings.
Yes.
Kyle Goff.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have 13 yes, 1 absent.
All right. Motion carries. Next, we have notaries. I think we have a pretty big list of notaries.
Ashley Dacus, Yanera Espinoza, Donald Franklin Green, Dorie Lynn Harrison, Chad Markham, Leslie McCurry, Kalen Morris, Randy Rich, Stephanie Stafford, Jason Vaughn, Kathleen Walker, and Bonnie Walker.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No surprises. Do we have any old business to come before the commission? Hearing none, do we have any new business? Okay. I will now recognize any audience members that would like to come and address the commission about non-budget related items. If anybody would like to come speak? Yes, sir. Come forward. Please state your name. Yes, sir.
I reside at 5030 Coalbank Road. I've been a resident there since 1979. This, my concern is the relationship between safety to the general public, the neighborhood, wild and domestic animals, and myself. I've been assaulted 19 times on my property line in the last 14 years, been hospitalized with $12,400 for medical bills, and a $64,000 scheduled back surgery, which I didn't go through with. There's one person in particular is responsible for this. They use the road 10 to 20 times a day. The road's only 16 feet wide, and it's closest, the most dangerous part, is 12 and 1/2 feet wide with an embankment that drops off 30 feet to the right that no one could even stand on. The in and out of the road concerns, Coalbank Road, which I live on, on the corner of Idlewild, it's a...
The corner of what road, sir?
Idlewild. It's an entrance to Thousand Oaks Subdivision. The other entrance is I don't know how way next to the Mexican Restaurant. In the 45 years that I've been there, when it was a tar and gravel road, it was much narrower. There wasn't very many problems. This residence originally belonged to my mother. And over the years, I would hear every time I came home of the almost fatal accidents because some people would drive ridiculous rates of speed, day and night. I personally buried over 70 animals. Every walk of animal that comes out of the woods, there's about 7, 8 acres there. It's a migration from the deep woods across the street from me to the lake, and I only have two neighbors. So along with all these problems that I've had personally with one particular neighbor, who is a drug dealer, and he's been doing this for 20 plus years, 10 of the surrounding houses around his house, they've all moved, and 6 of them since last summer. And a lot of them have died, and they fought this particular person in court, in front of both judges, past and present, and Sheriff's Department. And we're talking about this regular common people, president of association, the treasurer, the secretary, and then their property destroy their animals, poison, verbal assaults, physical assaults. All above is all company. As well, I have, in the last two years, last five years, I presented this, not this courtroom here, but I don't remember where it was in this building, but I brought in a detailed notebook with pictures and narratives under it, showing the width of the road and the dangerous parts of the road. If you take the 1 mile 1/10th from the restaurant on Highway 70, the Mexican Restaurant, turn in at 1.1 miles, you're at the other end at Coalbank, which is where I live on the corner. About 1,000 feet from the corner, Coalbank, it comes over a hill. Speed limit is 25. Tennessee's posted their speed limits, and there's no speed sign, it's 35. There are 25 mile an hour speed limit signs, except for when you turn off of Coalbank out to Idlewild. People in front of my house drive an average speed of 40 to 70 miles an hour. Coming from Flat Rock Road, flying through there, there's a 35 mile an hour sign all the way by Flat Rock, and there's one down towards the highway. I've repeatedly, with the Highway Department, Mr. Sawyer can relate to me for the last couple of years, as he paved the road and also discussed the problems I had with the drug dealer. And I've been promised last August, by November, these signs might be there. We're going to do something about it. I suggested a one-way, because the road's 16 feet wide, goes down to 12 and 1/2, and I have pictures that two cars can't pass. They have to stop. I've witnessed men, women, children pushing baby carriages, riding bicycles, power walking, walking animals dive off the road from my yard. I have eight acres worth of property line. I've watched them dive and crawl on their hands and knees, almost being killed. I, at one time, a couple of years ago, was walking in a school bus. If I put my hand out, it would have been ripped off. I dropped to my hands and knees and shook like a piece of jello. I went to the, I went to the bus department, turned on my phone, recorded what I was going to do, walked in, put it on the counter, walked out, and said, "Okay, I'm done with it." The next day, I was accused by the police, the Sheriff's Department, of threatening the bus people, or whatever their business is, that I was going to throw brick through the windshield the next time the school bus went by. And I would stop because I said, "Listen to the phone." There's a before and after. I don't threaten people. I stand up for the people that need help. I've never killed any animals. I haven't killed any people. And I've been threatened too many times to be living somewhere for 45 years, and not having the previous law enforcement, and the present law enforcement, and the judicial system, and the Highway Department not do anything. And the simple problem is, the road either should be a one-way, and that one section from Leo Avenue to Coalbank is the road behind my house, Idlewild. It needs to be reduced to a 15 mile an hour speed limit, because I had brought this to the attention of the commissioners before. Mr. White, Mr. Selby have been there, and they've come out and talked to me and drove the roads. And so has Mr. Sawyer. He's a good guy. I had confidence in him. And the problem is, no one's doing anything about it. I, at one time, as a single-digit child, watched a young girl get her head run over by the post office delivery to the mailboxes, playing kickball. And I'll never forget the screaming and the sight that it has. I don't want anybody dying. Like I said, I buried 70 animals plus along my property line.
So what I would suggest, Mr. Jeffrey, is that would be specific to Steering Committee B.
Where's that at?
So we'll have that meeting, will be on the first Monday in October. We can put you on the agenda to come and speak at that, or, I'm sorry, committee, Steering Committee A. So we can put you on the agenda for the first Monday in October to come and speak, and that would give us some time to speak with the road supervisor and try to come up with some ideas of what we might be able to possibly do.
Well, I have a little flat here of the property, and it's four speed signs that could eliminate or reduce the danger of somebody being killed. that could eliminate or reduce the danger of somebody being killed.
Okay, well, we would, I think you're a little bit past three minutes and we're happy to listen to you, but.
Would you like to have this?
You can present that at the Steering Committee meeting. Does he may have a calendar, that's the October sixth or seventh, maybe?
Uh, the sixth.
October, October the sixth. And you can come back, that, that committee specifically addresses those type of things and we, that would be the better place to, because it'd have to come out of committee before we could take any kind of action at full court to be able to do anything.
Well, you know, like I said, I've seen Mr. Sawyer, I've seen Mr. Page, I've contacted three attorneys, spent thousands of dollars and been severely injured. And the resolution, I mean, it dates back to all my neighbors, and they're all afraid to come forward, and they've moved, they've sold their homes instead. I'm not going to do that.
Okay. We'll come back and we'll, we'll listen to you and see if there's anything we can do. Thank you. Brooke, would you care to make a notation of that? Thank you. Anybody else like to address the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Duane Howard, I live in District Four, and I want to make this as nice as possible. I'm announcing that I'm running for State Representative for the Tennessee House in the forty-third, forty-third district, that'd be Warren County, White County. And I don't have a spiel to give you, I'd just like to stand here and talk to you for a minute and share with you some of the things I've been asked. I announced this a week ago, I've been to a lot of functions and I've been blown away with good reception that I've seen so far. I've been asked who I'm running against, I said I'm not running against anybody, I said I'm going to run my own race and I'm not going to get negative. They've asked me why, and I guess after tonight, y'all could probably give the same reason that you're sitting there is why I want to sit at the state. You've got to have a love for the community, you've got to have an unconditional love to sit through all this right here. And whether you, and anybody here agrees or disagrees with the outcome of tonight, please be good and respectful, because it's not easy sitting there, it's really difficult. Then they go into my experiences, what experiences do I have? And I said, well, it's pretty extensive. I guess you probably started through my DNA, and ever since my grandfather was a state representative, state senator, everybody in my family has been going, who's going to be next? Who's going to carry on the legacy? Who's going to be the one that takes on the tradition? But, never dreamed it would be me. But I've always had a civic man of responsibility because I jumped in and was a member of Farm Bureau, and that gave me my first taste right there of going down to the state and lobbying for things for the, the farm industry, and I loved it. Then I helped my hand up to become a county commissioner, and I was county commissioner for two and a half terms, and about two and a half terms, and served on multiple committees, like you all know, Solid Place, Budget, and Steering Committee A. And I think that I asked so many questions, they did it as a punishment, but they assigned me to be part of the interrogating. And so I started trying to read Robert through the board and learn those and learn department procedures, and found out I was a geek, I was a freak, I liked them. And so we started down that, down that road right there, I used them several times, sitting as a commissioner and trying to keep order, and sometimes that's a good thing, easy thing, sometimes it's hard, but you have those rules and regulations that you can fall back on. I've been a school board member, okay, and probably did the same thing there, asked so many questions and everything, they put me on TLE, Intensive Legislative News, to where I would follow bills through the House, watching ping pong back and forth from, from the beginning to the House, to the subcommittees and back and forth, and so I got a, a lot more taste for that, and I did a lobby for some things for the school system. And so I feel like I can, I can hit the ground running, I'm ready for this position. I, I know sort of some of the ins and outs, I know there's still a learning curve. And a lot of people ask me and say, well, have you been proven? And a lot of people look at that in different ways, and I said, well, probably on the local level, there's not been many people vetted more than me. And I've not backed up on what I thought was the truth in the facts, and we tried to help people the best we could. And Duane and I sat down the other day and we had a little laugh because he was commissioner of me here at one time, and he said, well, Duane, there's one thing that you've got to learn, you've got to change. You need to become a politician, and that, I've never been. I've never been a politician, it's sort of left a bad taste in my mouth, but I've got to learn. In the times that I've been elected three different times in three different positions right there, I've never asked anybody for anything. I've never asked for a vote, I've just sort of put my name out there, I've never gone as a Republican, I've always been an independent, never been a Democrat, never been an independent, so I've got to learn to, to be a politician, I've got to learn some, not everybody sees things in black and white, like I did, and that some people see just the very emotions, and we need to all come to a compromise. So I want, there's a lot of people say, give us buzzwords, what you stand for, what you believe in, I'd just rather talk to you and learn more, but time doesn't prevail. So some of the things that I am, I'm a Christian, I'm a conservative, I'm a constitutionalist, I love our community, I love our county, I love our country, I'm a capitalist, I love checks and balances, I'm for faith, family, farm, freedom, I'm about to wind up in fervor. I believe that every elected person should be guardians of the public's trust. And I prove that I still can stand strong for the people over politics. So I'm ready to go to work, I would love to have everyone's support if there's anything that, goodness, you've been elected, elected official for fifteen years, somebody's going to have a disagreement, some harder than others. I would welcome you, ask you to sit down with me, invite you to, see if we can come to a common, common interest, but I want to help. I've seen what you faced here, I've seen what you faced at the school system right there, I've seen that you have very little discretionary funds after CPAS, TSBA, PNC codes and AntTech gets hold of you right there. So sitting and, and experienced this level right here, I believe I could be of big benefit at, a lot of bills come through and they're, and they're aimed strictly for the bigger cities, Memphis, Nashville, nothing against those right there, but when it comes to this size and us, we'd rather you not even include us in that. Don't put a lump sum bill out there and say, well, you all got to live with it the same, and it's benefit for natural laws. So that, I believe, would be a benefit, and anything else that y'all could think of, I, I want to go there to help you, I never want to go there to hurt you, and I still think I have a lot left to offer, and I'll say thank you very much, and I'm very proud of what y'all, the service that you all do.
Thank you, Duane.
Didn't expect that, did you? All right, thank you all for the job you've done. I'm Steve Page, White County Sheriff. I need your help to fix the issue we have at Old Kentucky and Highway seventy. We've got to do something. We're having wrecks down there all the time, I've called everybody I know to call, begged, done everything I know to do. We need to come together and figure something out before somebody else gets killed down there.
We sent a resolution to reduce the speed limit and the state kicked it back.
I don't know what we've got to do, but we're going to need some help.
It's a state road.
Both roads are state roads, so they can.
Yes. But we need to do something, folks, something's got to happen somewhere, I don't know what, but I'm voicing my opinion on it, it is so dangerous down there, I live close to it. I'm afraid for my son driving through, my nineteen-year-old son. It is so bad through there, we worked two bad wrecks Friday. Friday. Airlit them one out, luckily the first wreck didn't hurt anybody, but it was still a bad wreck, totaled out two vehicles. We've got to do something. I don't know what it's going to take, how many more people have to die down there before we fix it?
What is your, with forty, with reducing the speed limit help or stop?
I think it will help, but I, what do we need to do, either a red light, wrong strips, something, something, anything that would help.
Didn't at one point the state asked us to throw the study? Is that what that's?
So there was, we had, we had talked about, we had asked about the road being widened, and the state said, if you think it's a problem, then you pay for the study, which is going to be several thousand dollars. If we think it's a problem, then we'll pay for the study. So that's how they shut us down, is they were going to force us to pay for the study. And then if we, I think if we found a problem, we had to pay for part of the work or something to, to be done if we.
Are you referring to THP when you're talking about the state?
Yes.
I'll be honest with y'all, I told my deputies, we do not work wrecks anymore, we call THP every time there's a wreck. Do you think, do we, do you know, Steve, do we have legal authority to, like if we weren't, if we wanted to install a, a stoplight or something, I don't think we have legal authority to do anything. He knows the answer to that, jury does. I, I don't know.
They've been really hard on us, I got it. Only, only fix right there is the red light. Put the green light on all sides.
I agree.
That's the only fix.
I agree. Me and jury both had to get on the state a little bit about getting down and cut the grass around the corners, because I mean, it was pulling up, we couldn't see. So we just, I need y'all's help, we need to figure something out and raise a big enough stink so they fix it.
I agree.
That's all I got. Thank you all for what you all done.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
I'll make a note to put that on the October agenda for Steering A as well. I've set October agenda a couple of times, September falls on a holiday, we have nominating committee, and it can't, we have to go to full court to vote those in for the new committee so we would be September, the first meeting in September of steering committees would be a transition. We couldn't do anything because of the, the change, so I spoke with Duane and we, we decided with it being a holiday and everything, we're just going to not have committee meetings in September, we'll have the, we'll come in here full court, September, third Monday in September, I have the date in front of me, to, to approve the nominations for the committee changes.
It'll be the fifteenth, Eric.
Fifteenth.
September fifteenth. All right, any other member of the audience like to address the commission about county commission related items?
Take this pretty quick, because I don't think I most understand it, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that I do. And I want to be real clear, this is not the fault of the commissioners or the county executive. Twenty twenty was the last property appraisals. Since that time, all of Tennessee has experienced unprecedented growth in appreciation. We hear and have conversations in aisle seven of Walmart, with all this growth, why do we have to pay more? Here's an example. Hundred thousand dollar property in twenty twenty, they was appraised at X. Same home built in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four that fit that formula. Three bedroom, two bath, eighteen hundred square feet, whatever the formula was, paid the same taxes as the house from twenty twenty, even though that house may have sold for three hundred thousand dollars. I don't think that's right. In my mind, this is easily rectified, to be clear, by the state, not by you. Paid taxes on what you paid for the property and upgrades, et cetera. Just like vehicles and boats, which had a period of appreciation during the pandemic as well, you paid taxes on what you paid for it. What I'm asking of you is take this to the state and work to get it changed. And thank you.
Anyone else?
Can we work with waste management over the red light?
Waste management have anything to do with the red light?
Well, when their truck starts coming in out of Dejounte's car show, there are going to be more wrecks.
Can't argue that fact.
Because they're going to be coming from Nashville on Seventy Highway.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Motion, second. All in favor?